Mr. Bowe, Mrs. Boyle, Mr. Perrinella.
Here.
Mr. Giannakis. Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Pender.
Here.
Mr. Sessenberg.
Here.
Mr. Cassio.
Here.
Mr. Penisi.
Here.
In accordance with the terms of the sunshine law, adequate notice of this meeting was posted in all school buildings, administration buildings, borough clerk's office, police headquarters, public library, four newspapers and tapped into on January 6, 2022. Please be advised there is no smoking on school grounds inside or outside at any time. Please silence all electronic devices in pursuant to district policy number 0167. Each statement made by participants shall be limited to three minutes duration and no participant may speak when and once on the same topic.
Thank you. Agenda additions or deletions? Okay, comments from the public on proposed resolutions? Seeing none. Approval of prior coordinates? Your motion?
No motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Will call please?
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes, on all but May 11th, the regular public meeting now.
Mr. Perrinella?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Sessenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes.
Assistant Penis report.
Thank you, Mr. Penisi. This evening, we'll be recognizing the retirees from our school district. These teachers, support staff members and administrators have dedicated their professional lives to the students of the district and will retire, knowing they made a difference in hundreds of their students' lives. These dedicated educators, staff members and administrators served as teachers, mentors and at times even parents to their students, always keeping their best interests at heart. We have prepared a video honoring the retirees this evening. Mr. Cassio, when you're ready.
Good evening, I'm Shannon Pulich, principal of Franklin Elementary School. Tonight, I'm here to present you three retirees. Mrs. Sally Gillis began her career with South Plainfield School District in September 1989 as a Raleigh School 4th grade teacher. A year later, in September of 1990, Mrs. Gillis transferred to Franklin School to teach 3rd grade. From that point forward, Mrs. Gillis amassed a 31-year career as a valuable member of the Franklin School staff. In addition to teaching at Franklin School, Mrs. Gillis worked as a student council advisor and coached girls' basketball, sharing her skills and knowledge of the game with many of South Plainfield's young athletes. Mrs. Gillis was an enthusiastic and dedicated teacher who always exhibited sensitivity and concern for her students. Her classroom was a warm and positive atmosphere for learning. As a conscientious educator, Mrs. Gillis always strived to maintain communication with parents to effectively support and help her students in all endeavors. A positive outlook, thorough knowledge and expertise in subject matter and creativity in the presentation of instruction are just a few of the many wonderful qualities Mrs. Gillis possessed and through which she gave the love, trust and devotion of her students. To that end, Mrs. Gillis enjoyed excellent relationships with colleagues, parents and students. She is to be commended for her enthusiasm and dedication to the children of Franklin School. Sally, you've made such a big impact on the lives of your students. You've opened minds, taught them what really counts, performed your magic and changed hearts. We wish you all the best in your retirement. Congratulations and best wishes. Mr. William Padlock began his teaching career on September 1, 1985, as a South Plainfield High School Physical Education teacher. While teaching PE at SBHS, Mr. Padlock coached the high school football offensive-defensive lines for one year before coaching the freshman football team from 1986 through 1994. Mr. Padlock spent those winter sports seasons as a high school assistant wrestling coach. In 1994, Mr. Padlock assumed the role of head coach of the high school wrestling team and remained through 2001, with a return to the position from 2016 to 2019. During his tenure at the high school, Mr. Padlock achieved many accomplishments and honors as Coach Padlock, Greater Middle Sec Conference Assistant Coach of the Year in 1992, GMC Coach of the Year in 1999, and New Jersey City Wrestling Coach of the Year in 2000, to name a few. Mr. Padlock was a coach who respected people who worked hard and gave an honest effort to be the best. He demanded a great deal from the South Plainfield wrestlers, not only on the mat, but as young men off the mat representing South Plainfield. Mr. Padlock himself was a very hard worker and earned a great deal of respect by example. A little-known fact about Mr. Padlock stems from his hard work and dedication. In 1997, Mr. Padlock was one of eight individuals chosen from a pool of over 10,000 entries to be named a true blue hero by Crayola crayons. A seven-year-old from Belneed who attended the South Plainfield Recreation Wrestling Camp at the high school submitted an essay recommending Pad as a true blue hero because he thought Pad was fair, never lies, treats students nicely and never yells if he loses a match. Quite an impact has been made in the lives of many athletes that came through the South Plainfield High School and South Plainfield School District. In September of 2001, Mr. Padlock traded in his high school roots and joined Franklin School as a physical education teacher. Mr. Padlock became a CP patrol advisor and instilled leadership in Franklin's board graders. He was responsible for developing some of the exciting events that students have come to love and look forward to: Fun at Fitness Day, the end of your half-mile and kickball during recess on Mr. Pad's heels. Students were given a well-rounded musical PE experience. Exercising to Elvis Presley tunes was not uncommon, courtesy of Mr. Padlock's love of Elvis. Pad is one of the good ones in a world where good ones are increasingly hard to find. He is a cherished colleague and friend. He will be missed by many, but he will never be forgotten by those who were fortunate enough to have known him throughout his 37-year career here in South Plainfield. We wish him all the best in his well-deserved retirement. May this next chapter of life bring you endless time to do all the things that you love. Congratulations. Mrs. Karen Kellerman began her career here in South Plainfield after middle school in September of 1989. She spent more than 20 years as a middle school and upper elementary teacher, teaching reading, English Language Arts and reading intervention. Mrs. Kellerman has spent over the past five years of kindergarten, first and second grade as an interventionist for our young struggling readers. She is passionate about addressing the needs of those struggling, especially dyslexic population. Mrs. Kellerman is a science and reading advocate and has been a wealth of knowledge for those that worked alongside her. She was a phonics go-to person. In fact, along with the ELA supervisor, Mrs. Kellerman was instrumental in getting the K through 3rd grade students the foundation, spelling and literacy program. To round out her service to the students, Mrs. Kellerman also served on the INRS committee for several years, proving an essential resource for planning interventions for the students in the general education classrooms. Karen, we thank you for imparting the gift of reading upon the students of South Plainfield. We wish you all the best as you begin your retirement, a time to do what you want to do, when you want to do it. Congratulations and best wishes to you.
Good evening, everyone. This is Lisa Cook, the supervisor of transportation, and tonight I have the privilege of recognizing three retirees from the transportation department. Veronica Green, who was a school bus driver for 26 years. Sue Muniz, who was a school bus driver for two years. And Kathy Crilly, who was a school bus aide for 21 years. We'd like to say congratulations to all three. Enjoy your retirement and thank you for your dedication to the South Plainfield School District.
Good evening, Dr. Tanzi, members of the Board of Education. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize four Kennedy School staff members that have decided to retire from teaching after this school year. These individuals will always be considered our family here at Kennedy School and in South Plainfield, and we certainly want to wish them the best of luck. So first, we have Cynthia Severino. She spent a lot of time in our 3rd and 4th grade classrooms, teaching kids, and after 36 years, she's decided to retire and spend some more time, I think, traveling around with the athletic program in South Plainfield. She has wonderful grandchildren that play lots of sports, so she's going to be seen a lot now outside the classroom, but mostly on the athletic fields. So we wish Cynthia lots of success. What we remember here at Kennedy School is how fortunate we were to have so many young students develop in their writing capacity. They won Junior Journalists many times, and a lot of students always attribute everything they learned in 3rd and 4th grade about writing and how to be a good writer to Mrs. Severino. So we're very fortunate to have her support in our talent shows, in our variety shows, all of our music programs. She's the first one to volunteer for just about everything. We're really appreciative of all the time that she spent with us. So thank you, Mrs. Severino, for your time and commitment to the children of Kennedy School, and we wish you the best of luck as you retire. And our next staff member, after 26 years as a paraprofessional, we have Mrs. Angela Uffer, who will be retiring. And if you know Mrs. Uffer, you know how much she absolutely loves and adores the youngest children in our school, and that's our kindergarten students. She spent most of her 26 years in the kindergarten classroom, working with children as a paraprofessional. The students always come back and remember Mrs. Uffer for her care, her gentle spirit. The parents send emails frequently throughout the course of the year, just thanking me as the principal on her behalf, just for all the little experiences, all the little things that she does as she crosses the kids in the morning and as she welcomes them into the school on their best days and on their worst days, at times when they're just not ready to learn for the day. She has this way of just getting kids just to be ready for that kindergarten program and to do their best. From the simple things to the biggest things, the biggest thing I'm going to remember about Mrs. Uffer is that anytime that I spoke to her, I saw her in the hallway, she always, always had a smile on her face, and it just showed how much she truly enjoyed everything she was doing here at Kennedy School. And we're certainly going to miss that energy and that enthusiasm moving forward next year in September. But we wish Mrs. Uffer a whole bunch of success in her retirement. She wants to be grandma and she wants to spend more time with her grandchildren, so we certainly wish her the best and we congratulate her for her wonderful career. Next, we have Mrs. Abib. Mrs. Abib actually retired last December, and we didn't get the time to recognize her or didn't get the opportunity, but we certainly paid tribute to her this evening for her over 30 years as a music teacher here at Kennedy School. Most people in the district that hear Mrs. Abib or the name Mrs. Abib, they attribute her to her frequency singing in the chorus or playing the guitar in some of our assemblies, even our 9/11 ceremony. She makes sure that all the kids know our patriotic songs, and through our assemblies throughout the year, she always remembered to keep our veterans in mind when she's paying tribute to them through Veterans Day activities and Memorial Day. She was a big, big proponent for our symbolism here at Kennedy School and teaching our 4th graders our school song, and also making sure that they understood each one of our multicultural programs and all of our programs throughout the year. She also did a really good job teaching students at all levels, no matter if they're brand-new in the chorus or if they love to sing every day and they're really good at it. She was a great teacher to teach every child in our school. She eventually even transitioned into her band and orchestra program, and she was having a little trouble understanding why she had to do that, but I think it was because of the high expectations she set on herself, and we were fortunate to have her last year as an educator here at Kennedy, where she was our band orchestra and chorus teacher. And we were very fortunate that she had that ability to teach the kids before they got to 5th grade and continue their music program. So thank you, Mrs. Abib, after 30 years. We already know you're celebrating because we just saw you at one of the retirement dinners, and you seem very, very happy right now, so we're very happy for you. So thank you, and we hope you're just on the side that your father remains healthy and you can continue to enjoy your retirement once he gets better. And finally, we have one more staff member we'd like to recognize, a very important staff member. One of the biggest reasons why Kennedy School is so strong, and one of the reasons our school district as a teaching staff is so strong, is Mrs. Dorian. Mrs. Dorian has decided reluctantly, after 27 years in the career, to retire from teaching. I know that she always said she was going to retire each year, but now it's actually come true, and her 1st grade classroom will never be the same because of the amount of students that came through that class that she will always remember, and they will always remember her because she just had a way with teaching kids, and it doesn't matter which student sat in those chairs in the classroom and roommate, they all came out loving her, no matter if she was upset one day or she was happy another day. They always seemed to have a special bond with Mrs. Dorian and always considered her their mother, their friend and their teacher. And for years and years after that, after she taught, she also sends them notes and remembers them every time they come back to visit. One of my experiences with Mrs. Dorian within my first year here at Kennedy School was when a high school student came back and just thanked her with flowers, just because he was graduating, and he just wanted to thank her as one of his favorite and most influential teachers that he's ever had, and that's a testament to Mrs. Dorian. There's many, many examples like that for her, and I'm just truly honored to be able to share my experiences educationally with her and have her as a person that always was good for kids and always good for Kennedy School. Outside of our school, you'll see Mrs. Dorian, I'm sure, certainly supporting every school in our district for many, many years to come because she's a South Plainfield lifer and she just adores our town, and it's going to be a see-you-later, not a goodbye, because I know that we're going to see her for many, many years to come. So thank you, Mrs. Dorian, for all the time you spend here at Kennedy School, raising money for scholarships and teaching kids every day and just being that person for most of our staff to lean their shoulders on when there was good times and bad times and just picking everybody up when we needed to move forward. So thank you, Mrs. Dorian, from the bottom of my heart. And finally, I just conclude with a quick saying that you can't retire from being great, and there's many, many retirees this evening that are great, they're great individuals, they're great educators, they're great people. And as you retire, especially our Kennedy School friends and family, we know you're going to continue to be great. We wish you the greatest in health, happiness and luck. You're never a stranger to us here in Kennedy School or in this school district, so we hope to see you very soon. So this isn't a goodbye, but it's a congratulations, and we move forward with still celebrating you from many years to come. Thank you, and everybody enjoy your evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Melissa, and I'm Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction with the South Plainfield Schools, and it is my pleasure to congratulate Anne Marie Stokel on her retirement this evening. Mrs. Stokel began her career as a high school English teacher with the South Plainfield Public Schools. She was a teacher for two years before leaving the profession to have and raise her three children, Lauren, Melissa and Jimmy. It's not really fair to say Mrs. Stokel left the profession at all, however, because she continued to work as a South Plainfield School home instructor and substitute teacher. She also taught various evening classes at the Sipton Institute, including keyboarding, grammar, punctuation and communications. In her spare time, she was also the Franklin PTO president while her children were in attendance there. Upon her full-time return to teaching, Mrs. Stokel was hired as the Roosevelt Elementary Computer Teacher. Her application included an educational philosophy, from which I quote, "It is the responsibility of an educator to instill in their students a desire to learn by showing their enthusiasm for the material they are presenting, as well as being knowledgeable in that material." Library media, educational technology, computers and STEM are just some of the things Mrs. Stokel is truly enthusiastic and knowledgeable about. Her experiences in these areas continue to grow through her appointment to Curriculum and Educational Technology Supervisor in 2010, as well as her appointment to the South Plainfield Public Library Board in 2012. She also is an adjunct professor for Educational Technology at New Jersey City University. Mrs. Stokel is a champion of women in STEM and was a catalyst for many of South Plainfield's computer and STEM offerings, as well as initiating our Classroom 1 to 1 program long before other districts were on board with the trend. I am convinced Mrs. Stokel's meticulous and detail-oriented nature is how she juggles working, teaching and volunteering. The wild cards in the mix, however, are Walter, Scarlett, Owen and Jimmy, Mrs. Stokel's grandchildren. I know she is looking forward to spending her retirement with them, along with her husband Jim. Mrs. Stokel, I'll miss having you on the curriculum team, but I wish you only the best for a happy and productive retirement. Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Dr. Coleman, Principal of Roosevelt School. I'm here to speak about the five retirees at Roosevelt School this year. First up, Mrs. Wilson retired again of last year as a 2nd grade teacher. She was with South Plainfield for over 30 years as an elementary school teacher. Most of those years were in 2nd grade. She was always nurturing to all of our students. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson, for all your years of service. I hope you have been and will continue to enjoy your retirement. Ms. Musto is a kindergarten teacher at Roosevelt School. She was a kindergarten teacher at Franklin, as well as Roosevelt, for most of her 23 years in South Plainfield. Ms. Musto often could be observed teaching about her cats and other pets, incorporating them into her daily lessons. These lessons quickly grabbed the students' attention as the students and Ms. Musto shared a love for animals. Ms. Musto loved her students and was evident in her everyday interactions with them. Congratulations, Ms. Musto, on your retirement. Next up, Mrs. Miller is a paraprofessional at Roosevelt School. She has been in many buildings over her 20 years in South Plainfield. Most recently, she has been in pre-K, and as a staff member, I know I could count on in any situation to make the decisions in the best interest of her students. She is selfless in all of her interactions and made sure that the students got everything they needed. Thank you, Mrs. Miller, and enjoy your retirement. Mrs. Early is a pre-K teacher at Roosevelt for 21 years. Mrs. Early is a teacher that goes above and beyond each and every day. The pumpkin patches she put on for all pre-K classes took countless days and hours of preparation and was truly an amazing event each year. She would do anything for her students. With many 3- and 4-year-olds, they have a hard time coming to school and leaving their parents, but when they saw Mrs. Early each morning, it seemed as all their problems left, immediately left, and then ran into her arms and forgot about their sadness. Mrs. Early, you have a magical way with your students and all the people you encounter. I will sincerely miss our morning conversations and the wisdom you shared with me day in and day out. Congratulations on your retirement. Mrs. Murray has been in South Plainfield for 38 years as a physical education teacher. Half of those years were at the high school and the other half were at Roosevelt. She also coached track, where they won counties and states, and also coached basketball as well. Mrs. Murray always does and did what she needed to make sure all of her students were active, this including running field days, moving her schedule on days where we had special events to make sure that all of her classes had physical education. Mrs. Murray has a unique ability to meet her students at their various levels. This allowed her to form a special bond with all of her students that was evident inside and outside the classroom. Congratulations on your retirement. Thank you to all the retirees. This year, I wish you best of luck and enjoy your retirement.
On behalf of Grant School, I'm Mr. Sorullo, the principal. We want to congratulate Joan Stacio on her retirement. We're here in her band orchestra room. She's taught not only at Grant School but across the district. Thank you, Joan, for all your work with our students, orchestra, chorus, band and drama and all the many things that you do. We hope you enjoy retirement. Congratulations. On behalf of Grant School, I'm Mr. Sorullo. I want to congratulate Mrs. Barnett on her retirement. We're going to miss you here at the Grant School gym. Thank you for all your time at Grant School and in the district.
Good evening, this is a new garrison, and I wanted to take this moment to recognize Mr. Robert Deal for his 23 years of service to South Plainfield School District. I first met Bob 20 years ago when we were both colleagues and high school teachers, and then he later went on to become the disciplinarian at the high school, and then he became the vice-principal of the high school. I spent many times needing his assistance, and he was an asset to the high school. He then went on to become the principal for nine years at Roosevelt Elementary School. I once again had the chance to work with him when I became the supervisor, and then he went on to become the high school principal for two years, and he ended his career as the Franklin School principal. I want to wish him the best of luck in retirement, and I'm sure he'll have time now to enjoy with his kids and his grandkids.
Good evening, my name is John Fiscolo, and I proudly serve as principal of South Plainfield High School. I'd first like to take a moment to congratulate all of the retirees for their years of service to the students, staff and this community at large. You've left an outstanding mark on us, and we're incredibly, incredibly grateful to you for it. I have a number of outstanding retirees that I'd like to recognize this evening, and I will do so alphabetically. Our first retiree is Ms. Karen Bacunas. Mrs. Bacunas served as an administrative assistant in the school district for the past 36 years. Most recently, Mrs. Bacunas has been with us at the high school and has been an invaluable member of our staff, focusing on attendance and making sure that everything's squared away in the main office and pretty much asking her to do anything I could ever ask her to at all, and she does so in a timely, professional and outstanding manner. So I personally want to thank Mrs. Bacunas for all of her hard work and dedication to her job, to her school and her flexibility throughout her time with us, and wish her well on her next endeavor. Our next retiree is Mrs. Donna Egan. Mrs. Egan served as an English teacher in the South Plainfield School District for the past 19 years. I want to thank Mrs. Egan for her passion. Mrs. Egan has a passion for education, for her content, for her students and for seeing them through to succeed. Anytime you speak to Mrs. Egan about the students or anything she covers in class, you can just see how much she really loves what she does, and I think that's something that we could all pick up and really thank from the profession. So thank you, Mrs. Egan, for sharing your passion for poetry, writing, literature with our community and the impact you've made upon our students. Our next retiree is Mrs. Nancy Flannery. Mrs. Flannery served for the last 25, 26 years as an administrative assistant, spending her last several years at the high school, working in the guidance department. Mrs. Flannery was the person who helped us work our way through various changes in scheduling, making sure grades were in at appropriate time, doing all the really small, tedious, important things that really needed to get done to make sure that everything was done in the manner that it needed to happen. I want to thank her for her professionalism, her attention to detail, it's all second to none. You really did an amazing job, and I want to thank you for everything that you did for our school and community. Our next retiree is Mr. Michelle Figuezi. Mrs. Figuezi spent the last 25 years teaching special education here at the high school and in the school district. Mrs. Figuezi, no matter what position she was in, whether it was teaching math to whatever level she was teaching in, being in-class support with any teacher she worked with, she always found a way to be successful and make her students successful. It is her resourcefulness, her care for the students, her passion for education and learning and her ability to really connect with students and staff alike that really set her apart and made her a really just incredible member of our staff. You know, Mrs. Figuezi in the past year also was one of our student council advisors. Mrs. Figuezi and her colleague, Ms. Osborne, put on an amazing prom for our seniors and have set up an outstanding group of senior events. So right up until the finish line, Mrs. Figuezi has just been doing things non-stop at the high level of excellence she always have. So thank you for everything that you've done, and I wish you well on your next endeavor. Our last retiree is Mrs. Donna Tierney. Mrs. Tierney, I first met when I was in 8th grade, and she was my algebra teacher. And it's because of that that algebra is still the one part of math that I fully understand. And I speak for a number of countless, countless students who can say the same because of Mrs. Tierney's professionalism, because of her educational methods, because of the way she held us accountable and the way she pushed us to succeed. She taught us lessons in the classroom that went far beyond algebra and math and could not have been more powerful to finish her career over at South Plainfield High School after the wealth, wealth of work she had done at the middle school in 50 years inside of our district. Thank you, Mrs. Tierney, for all that you've done as a former student and now as a high school principal. In doing so, I'd like to congratulate all of our retirees and sincerely thank them for the services that they've provided over their time. You are truly an outstanding group. We will miss you, and... We will miss you and wish you all the best on your next endeavors moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Bacunus is now moving over to the podium so that he can hand these certificates to the retirees who are able to make it here this evening. Just wait for Mr. Castillo to turn the lights back on.
Nancy Flannery? Nancy Flannery? Donna Egan? Donna Tierney? Barbara Higbee? Cynthia Severino? Angela Upper? Sandy Dorian? Janice Early? Lisa Murray? Karen Hallerman? Cesar Guedes? And Anne Murray Stokel.
These are the ministers that have come tonight. If you did, I apologize if I raised your hand, let me know. And at the same pace, so all don't mind me. But congratulations all of you. I don't even want to try to add up the number of years that I've been here, but really, really enjoy yourselves and thank you. You made an impression on a lot of people. Some of them sit on the board, and so I'm not going to let you know how long that's been, but enjoy yourselves. Thank you very much for everything you've done.
Well, Mr. Castillo changes over to the next presentation we have on the video. Ms. Maliska is going to do the presentation of the HIV Self-Assessment for this past school year.
Thank you, Dr. Tansy Nishak. Every year, our district submits school-based self-assessments for our HIV reporting to let you know the possible score is seventy-eight. Each category is as follows: HIV programs and approaches. You have a maximum of fifteen. Training, unapproved.
Is that boring? Sorry. Okay. Can I go? Does that have to be recorded? I don't know what they can hear on this. Mr. Castillo, if she speaks, we'll pick it up on that.
Aye, yeah. You just give a couple seconds.
So for HIV programs, you have a maximum of fifteen points. Training, unapproved HIV policy is nine. Instructional staff and training programs is scored fifteen. Curriculum instruction on HIV-related information, a maximum score of six. HIV personnel, a maximum of nine. School-level reporting, a maximum score of six. HIV investigation procedures, a maximum score of twelve. HIV reporting, a maximum score of six. And as I said, a school grade can be up to seventy-eight. For South Plainfield High School, our self-assessment was a score of seventy. For the South Plainfield Middle School, also a seventy. John F. Kennedy Elementary School, a seventy-two. John E. Riley Elementary School, a score of seventy. Franklin Elementary School, seventy-six. Grant Elementary School, seventy-four. Roosevelt Elementary School, seventy-six. And as we look to the next school year, we'll be completing this assessment again in conjunction with our principals and school anti-bullying specialists. So we're always reflecting on how to best improve. Obviously, the higher the score, the better, but all of our things are in accordance with what's required of the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maliska. This evening, we'll also be recognizing the accomplishments of our spring student athletes. These amazing students displayed their athletic ability on the track, the court, and the field, always making our district proud. Many who will be recognized here tonight have earned praise not only for their team participation, but individually in some cases as well. The coaching staff has prepared video, and it'll be introduced by Mr. McCann.
Good evening. I would like to thank Dr. Tansy Nishak and the Board of Ed for taking the time to honor our student athletes. We had a very successful spring season. Lacrosse won their first division title, and the boys and girls' spring track team swept under both relays and division titles. Three of our coaches were honored by their peers as Division Coach of the Year and Conference Coach of the Year. Matt Connell for Boys Track, Chris Fish for Girls Track, and Tammy Zerka for Lacrosse. Four of our athletes were recognized by the conference. Isabella Mott and Jack Masson were named GMC Sportsmanship Recipients, and Sarai Adams and Tyler Fallon were named GMC Scholar Athletes. Congratulations to all our coaches, athletes, and the programs. Now let's hear from our coaches about the season.
Hi, I'm Coach Dana Kurshoe from the Boys Tennis Team. The South Plainfield Boys High School Tennis Team had an amazing season with an overall record in our conference of eleven and nine, and in our division, we had a record of eight and six. Captains of the Boys Tennis Team were Senior Tommy Baez Santana, Junior Ishan Johnny, Junior Aiden Medina, and Junior Anthony Chen. Junior Captain Aiden Medina, he was the vital force for our Tigers tennis team. His overall record was eighteen and four, and in the division, he had a record of thirteen and two. Aiden earned the honor of being the most valuable player this season, and he also made the All-White Division Team. He's bright, he's energetic, he's compassionate, and he's a positive role model on and off the court. Off the court, Aiden's academic successes have followed suit, where he has maintained a four-point-two GPA at South Plainfield High School. I want to wish Senior Tommy Baez Santana, Joel Arias, and Mark Santiago all the best in their future endeavors, and thank you. Thank you so much for being a part of this program and making it so special. Congratulations to all the seniors. Thank you.
The South Plainfield High School Golf Team had a great 2022 season. Their season record was seventeen and two, with their only two losses coming from the Edison Eagles, who ended up winning the division with a perfect season. SP Golf also qualified as a team for the Central South Jersey Group Two State Tournament down at Twisted Dunes Golf Club in Egg Harbor Township. GMC Finals were held at Middlesex Meadows Golf Club, where the Tigers qualified as one of the top eight teams out of the twenty-three in the GMC, competing for the county title. SP also had some individual awards that were won this season. Dylan Jeffries, Henry Bluit, and Adam Zarambo won All-White Division Golfers, and Dylan Jeffries being the only second-best golfer behind Senior Edison golfer Mo Heat, who was going to a D-three college. Coach Kispary was ecstatic about the overall performance this year's season and looks to make a run at the division title in 2023. Congrats to everyone that participated for the SP Tiger Golf Team listed below. Dylan Jeffries, junior. Henry Bluit, junior. Robert Barrios, junior. John Coreno, junior. Adam Zaramba, sophomore. Lorenzo Barbara, sophomore. Kayden DeKine, freshman. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd first like to congratulate all the athletes here tonight. This year, our softball team did an outstanding job. For only having two seniors in the lineup, they finished nineteen and seven in the GMC, second in the White Division, made it to the semifinal of the county tournament and the semifinal of the section. A job well done. I'm looking for bigger and better things next season with a lot of athletes coming back. We also had three athletes selected first-team All-Division. First, Lindsay Oliver, sophomore, third base, batted third in the order, batted four-eighteen, thirty-eight hits, seven home runs, and thirty-seven RBIs. Lindsay Oliver. Next, our center fielder, Grace Capirelli, batted second in the order, batted thirty-four hits, twenty-four RBIs for a three-eighty-two batting average. Grace Capirelli. Next, our shortstop, Sarah McNelly. Sarah did an outstanding job. Our leadoff hitter led the team with forty-four hits, led the team with thirteen doubles, led the team with sixteen RBIs, sixteen home runs, and forty-three RBIs for an outstanding batting average of four-eighty-four. Sarah McNelly. Also, we had Sarah McNelly selected first-team All-Conference. Seventeen athletes were selected, and Sarah was one of them. Also, Sarah McNelly set a few records this season. She set the South Plainfield single-season homerun record. She set the state single-season homerun record with sixteen, most in the state. She also had the most extra-base hits in the state of New Jersey with thirty. Outstanding, great job, and we have one more year with Sarah McNelly. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Scott Cleganass, head baseball coach at SPHS. Want to talk to you guys briefly about the 2022 season and recognize some of our athletes and their accomplishments. First, we finished the year with a record of thirteen and fourteen, falling short of team goals set fourth beginning of the year, division, county, state titles. The record does not speak to the hard work, dedication demonstrated by our athletes day in, day out. These guys worked six days a week, grinded six days a week, whether it be practices or games, and for that, we couldn't be any prouder. Now, let's talk about some of our athletes and their accomplishments. First, we'll start with our senior captain, Luke Bacunus. Luke Bacunus was a first-team All-Red Division selection as well as first-team All-County selection. Luke will be playing in the State All-Star Game on Tuesday as well as the Senior All-Star Game hosted by the GMC at North Rose Community Park later this month. Joining Luke as a first-team All-County Red Division selection will be our second baseman, Ty Dukeoff. Ty performed at a high level this year, collected thirty hits in our division as well as leading the team in batting average at a three-sixty-six clip. Also led the team to get hit by pitches. Ty is a gamer and had a great year. Joining Luke and Ty in the Senior All-Star Game later this month will be our pitcher, Jack Mass. Jack finished with a record of four-and-three, two-six ERA. Guy just absolutely dealt all year long. He was our guy, and he's going to be, he's going to be missed for sure. Other notables, senior Ty Allen, first-team GMC All-Academic Team. Ty was our right fielder, pitched, had himself a great year as well. Other notables will be, who will be playing in the underclass All-Star Game will be our first baseman, Ashton Donovan, our shortstop, Zach Robinson. Both these guys had tremendous years. Zach was our Rookie of the Year, and Ashton was our Iron Man getting it done on both sides of the ball. Ashton, twenty RBIs, nine, ten doubles, and Zach, twenty-seven hits, twenty-six runs scored, and again, helped this team be, you know, a tough opponent game in, game out. Folks, thank you very much. You guys have a great night, and I just want to end with a congratulations to all coaches and athletes on their spring seasons. Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Tansy, Ms. Maliska, Board of Education. This is Tammy Zerka here, giving you guys a spring update for the lacrosse team. This year, we tied our best record ever of ten and six and won the first-ever White Division Championship. We had four girls make it to a first-team White Division: Jess Conti, Madison Geis, Sarai Adams, and Nicole Courtney. We had two girls from that team make it to the first-team All-GMC. That was Madison Geis and Jess Conti. We had Sarai Adams and Nicole Courtney make second team, All-GMC honors, and we had four girls make it to the second-team White Division. That was Gianna Barbara, Nicolette Masaro, Gab Vitablay, and Cameron Peralis.
Good evening to the Board of Education, the wonderful administrative staff in our schools, and the members of the South Plainfield community who were either watching at home or attending in person. I am here to introduce you to the members of our Tiger Track and Field Program, who fought through a long season, took on talented teams, and walked away with the Blue Division Championship. The season had its ups and downs, but in the end, both the boys and girls walked away with prestigious plaques and undefeated records. For the boys, we have James Adams, Gavin Lessie, Logan Beddeman, who was All-Blue Division in the distance events and the four-by-eight, Adam Bowles, Vishan Budan, Jeremy Barrot, who was All-Blue Division in hurdles and the four-by-one, Sean Clark, Kyle Cortez, Jason Del Peoli, Christopher Downey, who was All-Blue Division in the pole vault, Andrew Fallon, who was All-Blue Division in the four-by-eight, along with Jackson Gaffney, who was also All- Blue Division in the four-by-eight. We have Isaiah Gonzalez, Michael Green, who was All-Blue Division and All-Conference in the triple jump. He finished second overall behind his teammate, Joe Adora, who we'll talk about in a minute. We have Elijah Haley, Marshall Johnson, Michael Lawrence, Pablo Maracay, Damian Mabiel, Aldrin Mercado, Joshua Ng, Joseph Adora, who is All-Blue Division in the long jump and triple jump and All-Conference in the long jump and triple jump. He had the biggest jump this year in the state so far, and we're going into the meet of champions. I can't wait to see what he does, okay? We have Anthony Peralis and Neil Prasad, who was All-Blue Division in the discus, Jalen Russell, who was All-Blue Division in the four-by-one, Patrick Smith, Edward Spalding, Anthony Tameo, who was All-Blue Division in the four-by-eight, John Tan, Jayden Vaca, Randy Vargas, Adnan Jonathan, and Henry Yu. The wonderful coaching staff, assistant coach Brian Holt, assistant coach Steven Balzer, and Matthew Connell, head coach. He was All-Blue Division, and he was All-County Coach of the Year. He did a fantastic job preparing these young men, and he was a sprinter coach, so ladies, for their accomplishment this year. For the girls' spring track team, we have Sephora Beck, Jasmine Burney, Riley Cassio, Ariel Catalanati, Tajila Davis, Madison Del Poli, Juliana Madison Del Poli, Juliana Farinella, Brianna Harris, who was All-Blue Division in the four-by-one and the javelin, Kylie Jennings, Imani Jones, who was All-Blue Division in the four-hundred-meter dash, Ashlyn Lehman, who was All-Blue Division in almost every distance event. She beat everybody almost all the time. She was fantastic. Jasmine Lewis, Sydney Loayakana, who was All-Blue Division and All-Conference in the shot put and the discus. She won the shot put, and she broke the school record in the shot put and the discus. Just like Joe, sorry, I left that sound, and I shouldn't have. Joe broke the school record, his own, in the triple jump. And then, Deshaye Smith's record in the long jump. We have Isabella Marin, who was All-Blue Division in the four-by-one. Caitlin McConville, Jamie Merogilda, Isabella Munn, who was All-Blue Division in the four-hundred. Sarah Orilowski, who did a fantastic job pole vaulting this year. Deanne Patel, Gianna Penyac, Angelie Prasad, Katherine Pfeiffer. Then there's Madeline Pfeiffer, who tossed a great toss in the discus in the GMC Championships and ended up winning it. She was All-Blue Division and All-Conference. And Maya Rose Ransom, who was All-Blue Division in the four-by-one. Madison Schwalbach, Brianna Sorhenda, Sophia Spieslen Girk, and Trinise Semester, who was All-Blue Division in that four-by-one as well. I was the head coach. We had John Nye, who was a fantastic assistant coach who handles throwing, and Alyssa Wetzel, who was the assistant coach handling some distance and the pole vault. It was a fantastic season. Today is, what time is it? It is the thirteenth. We have still the meet of champions to go. At the meet of champions, we will have Sidney throwing the shot put. We'll have Joe triple jumping, long jumping, and running the four-by-one. We'll have the rest of the four-by-one with Jalen, Randy, and Jeremy. We will be able to watch that. It's going to be fantastic, spectacular. And then we have Jeremy Barrell, who's going to run into one-ten hurdles and possibly the hundred. He made it in a hundred as well, but those two events are right after each other. So, it's been a great season. It's still going on, and hopefully, I have more news to tell you maybe the next time you guys get together. Thank you very much. Enjoy your summer.
Do you have any of our student athletes with us this evening? If you do, would you mind standing up? And I'll be joined by the students. I know that you ordered you to see this certificate, but I just want to say congratulations on the board. I also wanted to acknowledge some amazing work that's being done here around our school district. Mrs. Briskin and some of our students at South Plainfield Middle School worked on a project called The Last Souls Project. Students researched slavery and corruption in Middlesex County in eighteen eighteen, in which, through a loophole, one hundred thirty-seven free African-Americans were sold into slavery. The Last Souls Project acknowledged and honors those whose freedoms were taken. Our students, along with Mrs. Briskin, created an absolutely beautiful quilt entitled Say Their Names. Although I do not have the quilt here this evening, there's a very good reason. The quilt is on display in the East Brunswick Library beginning next week, but the quilt will return back to our district in the fall. So, it will be displayed for a period of time in the middle school. And I just thought it was important that we acknowledge the work of our students and their teachers. So, thank you so much, Mrs. Briskin and your students. I also wanted to, for one last time, acknowledge the class of 2022, the South Plainfield High School graduates. The graduation was absolutely beautiful, even though it was so, so, so hot. The students did a great job on the field, along with our teachers, administrators, and ground crew. I also wanted to thank the South Plainfield Police Department, the EMTs, and the Middlesex County OEM, who sent the cooling bus. It was so hot. So, thank you so much for all of your help. We truly appreciate it.
Thank you. We're going to have to go to executive session right now. The Resolts Pursuits Open Publicating Act, that the board meets in closed session at this time to discuss confidential matters pertaining to personnel. We should be out of there hopefully in no more than twenty minutes. Can I have a motion to exec?
Motion.
Second, all in favor? Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Ms. Farinella?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Pender?
Here.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Here.
Mr. Cassio?
Here.
Mr. Panisi?
Here. Here, okay. Curriculum, one through four, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, vote for, please.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Farinella?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes.
Mr. Panisi?
Yes.
Personnel, A through I.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, please. Vote for.
Mrs. Boyle?
On page five, number one abstained. On page seven, number twenty-one, no. On page thirty-one, number sixteen abstained. On page... Thirty-one, thirty-two. Okay.
Good?
Yep.
Okay. Ms. Farinella?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes, on all, but no on C-twenty-one on page seven.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes, abstaining on my brother, which is number one thirty-four.
Mr. Panisi?
Yes.
Okay, finance, one through fifty-eight.
Motion.
Second.
And I'll just say for everybody for the trip down to Atlantic City, just, you guys are up to see, abstain. Something did, so you go stand for yourself, okay?
Mrs. Boyle?
Well, not in the discussion, sorry. Okay, you're good, okay.
Mrs. Boyle?
Page thirty-one, number sixteen abstained. Page twenty-nine, under the attorney's bills list, I'm voting no on an item with a parent. Page thirty-four, number thirty, abstain on myself. Page thirty-five, abstain on thirty-six. Page thirty-six, abstain on twenty-eight. Page thirty-six, abstain on thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one. Fantastic, thanks.
Ms. Farinella?
Yes, except remove any fees for me to go to the board.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Pender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes, also remove any fees for myself for the convention.
Mr. Panisi?
Yes. Oh, comments on any item? We're done right here on the... I miss something?
We just...
Oh, comments? Seeing on board member comments. Down there. They've built more than I tried. I tried going both ways, so many... Did you have one? You can go, you can go. Download, download. Okay, got it.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to say congratulations and best wishes to all the retirees. You've been a vital and important part of our district and have inspired our students for many years. Your acquisitions will be filled with new staff with aspirations. You will always be remembered. Also, congratulations to all the spring athletes that we noted tonight. And I also wanted to say that we closed out a great year, and I'm looking forward to the coming year. Thank you.
I just also want to congratulate all of our retirees. We're truly grateful and thank you for all your years of service, hard work, knowledge, inspiration, mentorship, and everything that you have done for our children in South Plainfield. As you begin the next exciting chapter of your lives, I hope you have an enjoyable, fun, relaxing, and healthy retirement. You all deserve it. Also, congratulations to all the winter and springs, since I was not here last week. Student athletes and coaches for your accomplishments in sports, especially Coach Recko for Boys Basketball, Blue Division Coach of the Year, Coach Fish, Winter Track, Blue Division Boys Coach of the Year, Girls Spring Track, All-Blue Division Coach of the Year, All-Conference Coach of the Year, and Coach Zirka for Girls Lacrosse, All-White Division Coach of the Year, All-Conference Coach of the Year, Coach Connell, Boys Spring Track, All-Blue Division Coach of the Year, All-Conference Coach of the Year. Our day of service was inspirational and successful, as our student staff raised thirteen thousand six hundred fifty-four dollars to various fundraisers, all of which were donated to various charities.
That's only this, that's only this week that we raised about twenty-four thousand.
Oh, I understand correctly. Was donated to various charities of the individual school's choice. Our staff first responded to local game, was a fun night for all of the many South Plainfield community members who attended. One of the highlights were the parents from the individual schools doing bouncy ball races. Thanks for being such great sports. But the day of service and local games is a great way to bring our community together during such trying times. I want to thank Dr. Tanzi Leshack for her insight and imaginative idea to do this, and her planning coordination and execution of the events, and to everyone else who helped make these events so successful. I'd also like to congratulate the middle school eighth graders on their middle school promotion. High school will be the beginning of a new chapter in your lives, a chance for a clean slate. Get involved and take advantage of all the high school has to offer in the way of academics, arts, athletics, and extracurricular activities. These next four years will fly by so quickly, so enjoy these last years as South Plainfield students. And lastly, my heartfelt congratulations to the South Plainfield High School 2022 graduates. You have all the talents and abilities to make this world a better place. As you embark on a new beginning, new hopes and dreams, remember to make the next chapter in your lives count. We're all unique and special individuals. Believe in yourselves. Be proud of all you've accomplished over the last four years. I wish you with happiness and success throughout your lives, and remember, you'll always have a home here in South Plainfield.
Thank you.
I want to make this short and sweet and echo the sentiments of everyone else. Congratulations to all of our retirees. I know I had many of you all as teachers or coaches, or if not me, my siblings, my friends. You've touched the lives of so many individuals, so many in this community. So, thank you for your years of guidance and service to the community of South Plainfield. And congratulations to all of our spring athletes and coaches. Keep up the great work, and I can happily say that South Plainfield runs the GMC and the county. Thank you.
Yeah, in addition to the comments that have already come, I just want to say something about the retirees. You're from a different generation, and you've been role models for a whole new generation of teachers and administrators, and I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for all the good work that you've done for the Farinella family. And there's one teacher who retired tonight, probably the best math teacher I've ever known. She actually helped a kid, a fifty-seven-year-old kid up here, learn math in the middle school. It inspired him to become a math teacher, so thank you, Mrs. Tierney. I think she's the last teacher that ever worked with this guy on the days in South Plainfield. Congratulations to all our retirees, and especially, thank you, Mrs. Tierney.
Okay, again, congratulations to all our retirees. You made a huge difference in the lives of our students and your staff members by going above and beyond. Also, congratulations to the spring athletes and the coaches. And I have a question about the PEs at the high school. Are they the ones that are going to teach driver's safety and driver's ed? Are they all certificated, and do they all have their own government-issued numbers?
They all have these certificates. The numbers are, they apply to the state, so they're all qualified to have those numbers.
Okay, and also, to the awesome presentation that was given to the senior class this year on multiple issues, living life, experiences, drugs, alcohol, college life, college campus, and what to expect when you go into a job. I thought it was excellent, and I hope we can do that again. Also, happy Juneteenth, freedom of life time to come. And I have a question. On Friday before Juneteenth, it's a state holiday. On the Monday following Juneteenth, it's a federal holiday. What day do we follow?
We didn't have anything listed on our calendar. I also checked this out with the attorney. If any employee wanted to take the day off as a federal holiday, they were welcome to take the day off. However, because it was not recognized by the district, we could not, we can't force anybody to take a personal day or vacation day, but they have to make up that day, because it couldn't be that you have a day off while the rest of the district would work. So, when the school district did not recognize it as the day closed and you chose to take the day, you have to make up that time.
Okay, then Governor Murphy made it a state holiday.
The district has the opportunity to decide if they're going to recognize it or not. They chose not to recognize it. So, because they chose not to recognize it, we obviously would never penalize anybody who wanted to take the day, but then they would have to make up the time.
Okay, so the same thing's going to happen next year on our calendar.
Well, we talked a little bit about what we're trying to do in terms of the voting. I will have some type of an answer for you for next year. If we aren't able to do what we're hoping to do, we will have to push our date back in the calendar, which means we would be closed on the Monday of Juneteenth and then have additional days beyond that, where the children are still attending school.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. Also, will there be a freshman orientation this year before school starts? Because last year, they did it the day the school began. Do you know?
We haven't even discussed that yet. We haven't, we haven't discussed, I haven't discussed it with Mr. Scoble yet, so I don't have an answer for you.
Okay, when you do, can you let the people...
I'm sure Mr. Scoble will let the freshmen know when their orientation is.
Okay, because I know that people that are coming from private school to our high school are concerned about being able to do their freshman orientation. So, thank you. Okay, progress.
Thank you.
Mr. Pranta, can you mark the amendments, read up saying number sixteen on miracles, please? Also, congratulations to the retirees. I wish you a happy life moving forward. You know, I said it, I said it at the graduation, and I'll say, I'm good for today. You know, life is precious, so take advantage of it. Congratulations to the athletes for accolades this spring, and a happy summer, everyone.
Last thing, yeah, congratulations to retirees. I said it before, and I always said, looking out there to who's retiring in a number of years and what they've gone through all those years and all the, you know, the good things, the impressions they made. I know, you know, you stop teaching, you stop the relationships you're building, what you instilled in students never goes away. So, they should be proud of themselves. We are, and we're going to miss them, and I wish them the best of luck in retirement. Again, the sports, you know, it was a great job. Again, and, you know, I'm hoping that the next year, you know, we'll have some normalcy a little bit more and actually have everybody here. But it was, you know, it was a good year. It was a tough year, you know, but it was a good year, and we started getting back to normal. And I'm grateful that, you know, we have the summer to kind of recoup. And hopefully, the ground running comes September. So, I wish everybody a great summer and healthy one or two. Have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second, all in favor? Adjourn, thank you.